Good.
I'd like to call the October 7, 2024 City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Okay, Kim, Counselor Holmes is online. Everybody else is present tonight. Have a chance to everybody to look at tonight's agenda. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Counselor Santiago? Motion by Counselor Santiago to approve agenda. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Counselor LaFrenz. Need discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries? The one thing we did have, you had a little change on that resolution. Is that in the packet or? Okay, any public comment?
Ms. Mayor, what is the change to the resolution?
Well, I think Section 2 wasn't in the packet.
Oh.
I don't think we need to change the agenda for that.
No, just when you read the resolution.
Change that we get down to the... We get down to the motion. Um, kind of slowing down because we're gonna... Have we heard from Jack? Okay, great. She's on her way then. They see no public comment. We will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we're looking at the September 16, 2024 City Council meeting minutes. After you've had a chance to look at those minutes, looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Yes, Counselor? Jacob makes a motion to accept. Any seconds? Second by Counselor Santiago. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Moving right along. We are... To number two, proclamation. We are recognizing October 14, 2024 as an Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm going to go ahead and read this. Whereas the City Council of the City of Scappus acknowledges the rich history of this land, which has been inhabited by the Indigenous Peoples for countless generations, including the Indigenous tribes of the Pacific Northwest. Whereas the City of Scappus recognizes the enduring presence and contributions of Indigenous people to our community and the nation as a whole. And whereas we acknowledge the injustices and hardships faced by Indigenous Peoples throughout history, including forced removal from ancestral lands and efforts to assimilate their cultures. And whereas we believe in the importance of self-reflection, truth, and accountability in addressing this history and working together with Indigenous nations towards a better future for all. And whereas the City of Scappus proudly joins the growing number of cities and towns across the United States in recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, providing an opportunity to reflect upon, learn about, and celebrate the resiliency and enduring presence of Indigenous Peoples in our community. And now therefore be it resolved that Joe Back is Mayor of the City of Scappus, along with the members of Scappus City Council, hereby recognize October 14, 2024 as Indigenous Peoples' Day, encourage all residents to honor and respect the Indigenous Peoples of our community, both past and present, and who have enriched our city with their history, culture, and contributions. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Scappus to be affixed down at the City Hall in the City of Scappus, Oregon, on this seventh day of October, 2024. Thank you. Okay. Hey. Um, we don't need to make a motion. Can we skip that and come back to it? Uh, we can move on. We do have a, um... Resolution. When someone steps down off council, it's a, uh, resolution. We have to declare a vacancy. So in front of you is a resolution declaring a vacant position on the City Council for the City of Scappus 24-15. One change we are looking at is, you have it in front of you. Section 2 instead should read, "Council declares Mr. Bailey's position vacant, and at the next election, a successor shall be select... elected to fill the unexpired term." Think, um... I mean, that all makes sense except that the election... If someone... So if someone... In November, would they come on in November? Or wait till January?
Right, it would be till January.
Because they won't... The term will just go till the end of the year, unfilled. And then whoever wins at the election will take over in January.
Right, I mean, that's how it's... That's how the charter's listed. That is, if the election's within 100 days, um, shall be for the election.
Yeah. Okay.
What that means, we were not accepting any application.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, if you look at the, whereas, uh, Section 26, filing of vacancies, vacant elect... City officials shall fi... fill an appointment by majority, occurring more than 100 days after the appointment. The election is less than 100 days, so we will not fill the position with an appointment. Correct. Okay, so you have a motion to accept the resolution. Who's the resolution? Motion by Counselor Santiago to approve the resolution 24-15 is written. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Counsel President Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries? We're done. Oh, wait. Back up a page. Come on up, Jack. You're up, if you're... You're ready, if you're ready. Really appreciate it. Today we are, uh... The pleasure of having Jack Massey, Executive Director of South Columbia County of Chambers, County of... County Chamber of Commerce, to give her annual kind of update, semi-annual update.
We're talking?
Yes.
Okay, super. So technically, my title has changed. We'll start out there. How about that? So we are now a chamber staff of two. As of April 1st, Ashlyn Bowers was hired to be a coworker at the office with me. She is the Director of Communications. I am now the Outreach Director. So our... Used to be all my workload has now been split into she will be doing ribbon cuttings, networking, on the events that we have. And I'm going to be, I have been focusing more on outreach, getting memberships in the door and building our membership base. And some new changes. So with that, letting you know that that change has taken place. As the outgoing Executive Director, handing over these tasks, you know, any kind of transition can take some time. And as expected, working through some of those transitions is just kind of for the course. And, um... Retaining previously the budget and payroll hours that we had before, you know, the chamber's still on a budget. So we're watching those hours and whatnot. So if you have any questions about something to promote for the city, you need to be reaching out to Ashlyn Bowers. We share an email address, so you can just send something to the same email address and just make sure that it's acknowledging that you need something promoted.
Is that Ashley or Ashlyn?
Ashlyn, and it's A-S-H-A-L-Y-N. Thank you. I think that... Oh, I do have her name put in here as well.
Thank you.
So just to recap on the 2024 Awards Banquet that we had back in March. It was on the 23rd. It was, I consider it to be a success. Provided an opportunity to highlight our business community offer, probably the largest networking event that there is all year. This was a little bit of glitz and glamour and bringing Hollywood to South Columbia County. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it was great.
Um, we rolled out the gold carpet instead of the red carpet. We had Raffle Prizes, group photo booth, wine and whiskey wall, just under 300 guests in attendance. Ended out 11 awards to our local businesses. It was just a great time. The theme was, "It's Your Time to Shine", and the idea was that we wanted all of our guests to feel like they were rock stars, movie stars, walking in. We had the marketing paparazzi waiting outside, "Keep it Local" with Sierra Trass. We had an ambassador with the Chamber, um, being live feed as the guests were walking in and wanting to share those that they do for their business and services. That was fun. Just wanted to do a shout out with some of the groups that helped us make that such a success. My Northwest Event provided most of the decor and the table settings. Bushel and a Peck Flower Farm was, um, came through with some floral beauty. And kicking off the, um, event itself, we had Alt Elite Cheer Team. Young group of gals, ages four to 10. I introduced them as our future Businesswomen of America here. So they did a little routine for us, and it was really cool. They do something called pinning. When they do their tournaments and things, they have these clothespins and they decorate them or whatever. And knowing that our theme was "It's Your Time to Shine", they all wrote "Shine" with letters or tools or something on them. And as they left the stage, they gave each table a pin. Each table got pinned, and when you get pinned, it's like a good luck or friendship or that's kind of the vocation of things. So that's what they do for their friends when they're doing tournaments, to get pinned. So that was really cute. I did four different courses for the meals throughout that evening, and I wanted to, like I said, share the love. So the Klondike provided our cocktail hour appetizers. And then, um... I had... We had, um, the Village Inn provide the salad course. Sunshine Pizza did the main course. And then, super cool, um, Allen Tourism donated all of the desserts. And they made a beautiful arrangement of dessert table, and it was just amazing. Shout out to Keep it Local for helping out with bringing paparazzi. Cherry on Top Photo Booth did the free photographers... Photography for the group. Pictures Beyond the Forest and Crooked Creek Brewery both had, um, no host bars there, so people could have wine, whiskey here, one like the Porables. And then, um, Beyond the Forest was offering like cocktails and mixed drinks. Mr. DJ503, if you've been hearing his name around, he was good tunes for us. And of course, we did the slideshow, giving a full annual report, what the Chamber was been up to, what our plans are for moving forward, and doing the award presentation. So I hope you had a good time. It was great to see you there. What did you think of it?
I enjoyed it. Um, I would like to see more Scappus businesses. And that's like, I want to figure out, how can we help you with that? Because there's a lot of St. Helens and beyond, and I think it'd be a good, uh, good thing for Scappus businesses as well. But it was really good to network and see, um, it was my first one, so seeing all these other companies, seeing the Awards Banquet, and seeing how everyone kind of gets along and works. So I think it was very... It was good. I really enjoyed it.
With anything, we can always expand and improve, you know, if things ever be perfect, but you can always find ways to improve on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Always wanting to get more Scappus businesses involved in all the things we do.
Yeah, and working, I know Jason Moon was heavily there and working with him on small businesses and keep it local. I mean, just networking them all, I think will help.
It sounds like Megan Fawcett, who is working with the SBDC as well, is going to start focusing more on the Scappus area too. So that's going to be a huge boost and maybe just what you guys are seeing, hopefully maybe some Chamber memberships as well. You know, a membership is membership. I like to get members in the door, but at the same time, my goal, whenever I do get a new member, is to make sure that since they're making an investment in the Chamber, they need to be getting a return on their investment. Not just like, yeah, you joined and then you never hear from us again. There's got to be, you know, some back and forth, but I just want to assure you that we do our best to make sure that we're really working with the members. We don't just sign them up and then never talk to them again. But at the same time, I tell them when they sign up, you guys got to put some skin in the game too. Have to show up for the networking event, get your name out there, get your face out there, get people to know what services you offer, so there can be that remembering later, yeah, I know someone who does that, and get referrals and connections, partnerships, and fundraisers that start finding different others, so. Got to get the skin in the game.
One question I do have is for Ben. Ben, how much experience do you have with Chamber of Commerce? I mean, type of businesses?
Um, I've been in and out of many different chambers in many different cities and states, so, um...
We'll talk about...
Well, similar in some way, but I'm sure very different.
Right, they all have different, uh, different things that are really good. I know that the one up in Umatilla County, uh, the Hermes has started doing that for their shop at local, keep it local thing, they started this new app that they have in California that actually gives discounts and promotes shopping local. People sign up for the app. It was kind of a cool idea, but...
That's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'll get with you on that. I don't remember. I'll have to look up what the app was called, but it was... I, I used it and it made me shop more local because I got some discounts for it, so.
Are you getting our newsletter, by the way?
Yeah. And I was able to go to your last Chamber event, just over at Full Tonnels, which is good.
Um, so, so yeah, absolutely, and as our team of staff is growing, so is our board. I just want to introduce that we have a new secretary, Sandra Appusen, if I think I'm saying that correctly. She has now stepped into the secretarial position. And she is out with the beauty lounge, St. Helens. Another new member that came on at the beginning of the year, Tyler McVeigh. He works with a company called Premier Restoration Partners. If you don't know what they do, they are fabulous. Services that they provide for disasters, flood and fire, and just helping families get back to regular lifestyle again. Heartwarming, some of the things that they tell me that they've done for families. And then Beth Dennis, used to be Beth Moffett, with my, understanding my Medicare. All new members joined to the board, so good. We like to see more activity there as well. First, we're all about community engagement as much as possible, even though on unlimited time. Just wanted to acknowledge that we were involved. We participated in the St. Helens Kiwanis Parade, the Citizen State at the Park that was held there at McCormick Park, and of course, the Scappus Outdoor Fest, which was really great turnout, I think. It was a beautiful day and it was like, just... Oh, and lots of people were coming in and whatnot. Um, you see some pictures there of... Okay, there. And I just want to say thanks to Mayor and some of the other city staff who helped me set up and tear down. I unknowingly had hurt my wrist and thumb, but I didn't know at the time that I actually had broken my wrist and my thumbs. I was being a little bit, um, I don't know. Ignorant, I guess, to think that maybe it wasn't really that bad, but truly it was broken. So, um, having, having some extra hands helping me set up and tear down was very helpful. And then we just, this last Saturday, we had our first semi-annual fundraising event, which was the cocktails and costumes and cocktails. Good turnout, lots of fabulous costumes, a lot of fun, a lot of dancing, and a lot of promotional opportunities for businesses as well. So with that, we have a new, couple new members that signed up because they did like an in-kind service for us at the event. Try to do that as well. So if any of you saw Facebook pictures or videos, had a good time, should have been there. I did invite you. Yes, so just keep a... Beware of some of the things that we're doing. If you see something new, give it a try. I'm enjoying the fun because we do, we mix it up and have fun. We do. Lastly, something that's not on this report is that Ashlyn and I have been trying to beef up the benefits. Trying to make our membership benefits, you know, give a little bit more. You know, it's always good to improve on things. So one of the things that we are looking to do, and we have board approval moving forward, is driven by the Chamber and you see the banners that are on the railing there that face Highway 30. Those are banners that were owned by those businesses, and I just left it to gold and platinum members allowing them to do that there. Moving forward, we're going to be taking those down, and we're going to be doing that same concept, but we're going to have banners being made that are the same size, similar template, and offering our gold and platinum members the opportunity to advertise along that railing there, making it look a little more professional and, since you will, still allowing the members to have some say in what their banner looks like, working with the local business, and just offering that as another advertising opportunity. Ashlyn is going to start be doing more regular podcasts with our gold and platinum members, so getting to know the history of the people who own the businesses or the events that they're planning or, you know, coming up to, um, out to the community. So trying to do a couple of things like that, and then of course, offering discounts for attending our big events like our annual meetings. So if you purchase a table, you get some discounts for those levels as well. So any ideas that you might have, like that you said there?
I just followed up with that. The app is called Open Rewards, uh, the company they work with. And it's not, uh, discount, well, it kind of is, it's like a coupon, but they actually give you cash back. So you work at, when you shop at any of these local places that are enrolled with the Open Rewards, rewards balance grows, and that's on top of any rewards offer they may have. And then you can actually reimburse at any of those companies to get cash back as you purchase them. It was a really cool, unique idea that kind of puts it all together.
See if maybe there's a way that Keep it Local in the Chamber can other...
Well, I don't know what the fees are for that or anything. I just, it is a cool app.
I like it.
Looking to get some cash back for people.
Suggestions are always the... Hand on. So any questions that y'all might have for me today?
I do have a question. So your, your memberships are, is there, well, your members, are they not just businesses? Are they any agencies or organizations?
Yes, they're, they're across the board. We, actually, we have five levels of membership. We have an individual member, which is not even a business owner. It could just be a person interested in wanting to know what's going on in the community, wanting to volunteer their time more, just wanting to be more involved. For $75 a year, they can be an individual member. There's nothing to promote for them because they're not a business, but they do get the advantages of coming to the networking event and just hearing what's going on and being involved. And of course, using the building is one of our benefits across the board as well. So that's kind of, for some businesses, when they work at home, that's a big, big, um, value to them. Build and use the Chamber as like their office, if you will. We have nonprofits, we have large businesses, small businesses, we, we have, you know, I mean, I don't know if I'm answering your question exactly.
Do you have cities? Members?
Yes. You guys are a member. Columbia City is a member. St. Helens is obviously a member. The, um, utilities, yeah. Anyone who wants to join the Chamber can join the Chamber based on the fact that we have even individual people, businesses, small businesses, what it is that they offer, if they're a nonprofit or...
I, I do encourage, I think, glad that we are members, and we encourage, I encourage all the cities to be members. Just makes us more unified as a county.
And the, the reason why I'm sitting here today is, um, for my time, I believe that St. Helens donated money, some grant funds to the Chamber when it was the visitor center for the purpose of, you know, tourism and things like that. Those monies went away and there were no monies available forward. With that, I think caveat was that they would, Chamber would have a representative every six months, go to the St. Helens City Council and give a report as to what's happening, right? Because they funded parts of them. So when I stepped on board, there was no funding coming through, but I thought, well, we're going to St. Helens. Why aren't we not going to Columbia City and doing this for all of them just because we should? Not because there's any money involved, just make sure that you guys are aware of what the Chamber's doing, how you could be involved, how you can help us grow as well. So the challenge I give you is, I would love for you to share with someone who's not a member, some more that you frequent restaurants, store, doesn't matter, large or small. Just ask them if they're a Chamber member, and if they're not, to share with them anything that you might see valuable or have experienced that's a reason for them to consider it. Right? They can come to a happy hour or a coffee and commerce before they're a member. Invite them to come to one of those events at one time, just to see if they see value in it for their business. If they do, fabulous. If they don't, not a hard store salesperson, I'm not going to come knocking on their door and buging them all the time, but just want to make sure that if they do sign up, that they're getting something back in return.
So a quick follow-up on that. You mentioned that you really prioritize trying to give back to those businesses or get something for them. What, you know, as we're talking to different businesses to try to promote or to ask them about the Chamber, what would you say is the biggest selling point that people usually like to join your Chamber for? What, what are you giving back that they really do the most?
Well, for example, like I said, the skin in the game concept, showing up to the networking events, it never fails. We'll always do an introduction of whoever's there, and I see it all the time. Someone will, you know, they're thinking, I need to go talk to that person, and we have a minute. So I see those connections being made, and I have a new member, same thing. Someone's going to hear what you just said, and they're going to be coming to you saying, I need to talk to you. You have something that I need, a service or product that I need to partner together because I see that would be a good match. So networking is huge, and the promotional side of it, our, our social media pages are booming because of what Ashlyn's doing. She's a graphics designer, so she's doing cool things on our media pages, and they're just growing. Our newsletter goes out to over 800 subscribers. I guarantee everyone who ever reads it. But, I mean, I feel like that's a good number, and it's growing with everyone pointing into, to see what's going on. And it's not just members who are on the subscriber list, it's general public, interesting as well. Ribbon cuttings are fun, just our events, I feel like we're really working together as a community. And as often as I can, I'm trying to match up. This person over here, and match some things up. So, um, the connection's being made, I just see happening all the time, referrals that are, as well.
Appreciate it. Now, I know unfortunately, we weren't here yesterday, but I think it's time. Can we get you and Susan up here since yesterday was your birthday, so we can sing to you? No? All right. Happy belated birthdays. There's cookies back there.
I saw.
Susan. Love to sing happy birthday.
You have to come over here, though, with me, right?
Yeah.
Right here.
Well, thank you, Jack. Happy birthday. Appreciate it, guys. Okay, um, you know, the meat of our meeting is over. There wasn't much tonight, but I still have some stuff to go over, calendar and some discussions. So tonight, um, we're looking at, we still have on, um, October 10th. Actually, the EDC meeting at noon is, is on the 10th this month. We moved it up. Um, and we have a City Council meeting, October 21st, 1st at 7:00 PM. We do have a, it's been canceled. This got moved up to the 10th, and Parks and Rec has been canceled this time. City Council Dinner, 6:00 PM at the Senior Center on October 22nd. We'll talk about that more in just a little bit. Followed by maybe a Planning Commission meeting, October 24th at 7:00 PM. Uh, City Manager, any updates?
Just a quick, uh, calendar update as well to add to that. So November, you should have gotten an email today, November 18th, uh, from 1:00 to 3:30 PM. That is when we have our in-person, uh, public meetings training that's required. The new law went into effect October 1st. Uh, so there are the in-person trainings. Like I say, we have ours, and it will be in St. Helens, so it's co-op-ing or grouping together with St. Helens and any other city that wants to do it, uh, at that time, from 1:00 to 3:30. There are some webinar that are, webinars that are still available. If, if there's any reason you can't make the 18th, but it wouldn't be an in-person, that's just online with anybody else who's there. And those, all the October ones are full, but there are some on November 17th, 14th, 19th, and 26th, and some in December as well. So I'd encourage the in-person, if at all possible, get it on your save the date. I know it is in the middle of the day, which isn't ideal, but it is the only one we could get in-person for.
City Hall.
That's going to be in St. Helens. Yeah, that, that one will be at St. Helens. They didn't give a location, I'm assuming City Hall, maybe the library. They haven't said yet. So we'll pass that out as soon as we get a specific location.
We did one at, they have a community center, senior center somewhere there. Um, we had one last year.
Right, I'd hope they'd at least give a location before it starts. But, um, yeah, I checked today. It wasn't listed at this time. Yeah, get that on your calendar. It, very, the Organs Government Ethics Committee just took over responsibility of that. Like I said, as, as of October 1st, they had some new legislation that went to effect. House Bill, I'm not going to quote it because I'm going to get it wrong, it's like 2308 or something, but, um, I'm sure that's wrong. Don't quote that one. But yeah, there are some things that they added. We talked about that last time about the deliberations with it, just what that means to deliberate and, um, some other things that they added. Uh, as far as, uh, there are other updates, Luma Vista has been a hot topic since I've been here. We've had conversations where, um, residents have called and tried to work with the county. Uh, no specific update yet, but they're supposed to be working, they have an attorney that they're working with to, to kind of get their site together on that. Looking more for a future maintenance agreement as one possibility, but they've also been talking about other things as well, that they're working on proposals to maybe come to bring to the council as well. So as soon as I have more information on that, um, there were some interesting proposals that I said, hey, doesn't hurt to bring it forward. But that is undergoing, and like I said, working with the county and the residents on that to hopefully come with the best option going forward. The, we'll have the dinner, I guess, we'll go over that.
Yeah.
Do that later. So, um, this one, I'm trying to not open a can of worms with this one, but so we, it's been great the last several weeks since we last met, have had a lot of great opportunities, going to a lot of great meetings with the, um, EDC and other economic opportunities, meeting with staff, meeting with partners. And I did have... And I did have an opportunity to go to our local Economic Development Committee, which is, you know, they're very engaged, having direction, trying to work on their strategic plan. And I'm sure Jeanette could give more of an update of that, or we could do that in a future meeting of where they're going. The Parks Committee has canceled again this month. I wasn't able to go last month because they didn't have it. And so it just posed the question, what I'm looking for today is to get a council feedback of their experiences. We're trying to go through how to best work with these committees, with staff, with the council, with liaisons, with the committees themselves. Are they set up the right way? What, what are they obtaining, what the council's desires are? And if more than anything right now, I'm looking for direction of, you know, the value of the council. Is there any thing I should know of direction that you'd like me to go with those or to look into? How much staff involvement there was, confusion from staff of how involved they should be? Are they just there to take notes? Are they involved in providing more information? Who's setting up the agendas compared to, you know, who's responsible putting together? Their role of the liaison. So there's just, we do have the, um, do have the bylaws, and I went through those in depth, and that does list out some of those. But there still seems to be some loose ends that aren't as clear. And so I'm just trying to get feedback from the council right now, so we can maybe go with a work session or something further, if we need to adjust anything on that. So kind of a long update question.
No, I think it's good to begin, these are council committees, so I don't necessarily want to task you with doing all this and figuring out what's best for our committees. It's kind of is on us. How, what do we want these committees to do going forward? So, but being that we can't really discuss outside of meetings, if people have thoughts, maybe they can send them to Ben, and you can compile the information, and I'll talk to you, but not, and then we'll set up a work session.
Yeah. So ju- just in general, though, if we could go through just at high level, so the value of the committees in general, economic development specifically, and Parks and Rec. Do, does the council feel in general that they're getting the value that they're wanting out of those? Or is there an overall feel that maybe we need to look further into those committees?
Let me just ask, Kim has had her hand up. Did you just want a discussion on this or on the past, the previous?
Yeah, I'd raised, yeah, I'd raised my hand on the ethics training. So Ben, I did not receive a calendar invite. Did you send out a calendar invite to reserve that time?
No, Susan sent out a email. Yeah, she sent out an email just to say we haven't gotten an actual calendar invite from them yet. So we're still waiting. So this is more just to save the dates.
Okay, so just so I have that clear for a hold on my calendar, you said one thirty to three?
One to three thirty.
One to three thirty on the eighteenth, okay.
Yep.
Um.
I have ours.
Yeah, no, that's why I risen my hand, raised my hand, so.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I'm definitely, I will be eager to provide some feedback on the utility of the different committees for the city, so.
Okay. Counselor Jacobs, what did you want to?
Yes.
Some good.
Um, so I have been the liaison for the Parks and Rec Committee since April of this year. And my observation over these last several months has been, I've seen, seen staff drive the meeting. Um, I've seen them really kind of set the majority of the agenda. And then when staff asked for input from the Parks Committee to prioritize amenities that have been identified in the master plan, to bring forward for the work session, uh, that, uh, that was stagnant. Like, there was no movement by the committee month over month. So in my short time, I myself have questioned, what is the value? There's good ideas to be discussed, and there were good informational presentations that were coordinated by Dave for the committee to think through, like outdoor recreation equipment was one. But there wasn't, on the, on the main task they had at hand, there was no movement. So that was a little concerning. I will say this, when I came in in April, there was two individuals on the committee, Paul and Ian, who did work and put together two drafts, which was at the request of staff, of what could a pickleball court look like and where in Veterans Park, as well as disc golf. Those two individuals did deliver like product, which I think is actually in the hands and maybe coming to fruition. But I keep going back to the prioritization that didn't happen. And as the liaison, I would ask every month, where are we? How's the committee doing? And it just didn't move forward, so.
Of those pickleball courts, was that at the direction of the council? Was that just a staff project that they put together? Was it part of the Parks Master Plan? What, what really guided making that happen?
So you were, the net was open.
The, um, a lot, a lot of what the Parks and Recs were meeting about was about the master plan and getting it approved and going through that process. And then we, Grabhorn, of course, was a big topic and, uh, you know, make sure that we, that the city does not miss that deadline for the, for the grants. And once, you know, I think it just came out, so once of, or the committee decided on a plan, it was very expensive. So then it's like, okay, reality, working with, I, I forget what the coun, the consultants were. But they, um, I think the, the idea was to get ideas from the consultants. What should, what are the projects? What can, what can we do with the money that is available? And they did give their suggestions, but it seemed like it wasn't coinciding with what the consultants were telling. What I recall, the committee, uh, uh, was not, didn't feel like they got enough information or the right or updated information from the consultants. And so there was some kind of, um, miscommunication from the consultants to the committee, and it, that felt like it was for a little bit. And I think finally, when they, the plans kept changing and the ideas kept changing, it just, it just dragged on forever. So during, when I switched for you, uh, they were coming to the finalization of the Grabhorn, for example, because that's the priorities. And, and then they really like, okay, let's focus on the amenities. What can we do? And that's what Dave was saying, okay, what can we do? So Dave was really driving like, okay, I need what you guys suggest for amenities for these parks. And then he just, he said, this is how much it's going to cost. It's going to cost a lot of money. It's going to cost that the city gets a loan, you know, X, Y, Z. So, um, that's what I recall from the, those meetings.
And were those?
A lot of frustration.
Right, and were those brought back to the council? I mean, because to me, the committee, it provides supplement for the council. Is, or was it operating as a separate committee, versus making a bunch of decisions now with the staff? The council kind of left out of that?
No, because the consultants did come to the, to the council meetings and gave the updates as well, so.
Kim, did you have something to add to that? Did you have anything on that, or separate?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna kind of add, um, my experience on the Parks and Rec Committee. I served for a couple of years, and I, I definitely felt that there was a bit of a disconnect between council goals and what the things, uh, the committee was working on themselves. And so I think, you know, I, I look at how other cities use these committees, and they seem to find a lot of value in them. So I, I think we do need to closely evaluate how other cities are successfully using their committees. I think they, they do bring value, um, to be able to create a forum for citizens to engage on the issues that are most important to them. And we know in particular, Parks and Rec is a key priority for citizens. Uh, we need to keep these forums, in my opinion. But I do think we need to have, they perform best when they have some clear direction, like when it's defining Grabhorn Park or the Parks Master Plan. So if council can give them some clear direction, um, I think that's good. I think there's also the, the general frustration, um, Counselor Santiago, you kind of hit upon that, is when I served on the Parks and Rec Committee, we had no understanding of what the budget was for any of the improvements or things that we were being asked to consider. So really understanding the scope of what you're considering, paired with the reality of the budget, I think is really helpful. And then really outlining kind of what the decision-making authority or process is. How, how do the decisions and opinions of the Parks Committee actually feed into the broader decision-making process? I don't think that's been very clearly defined. And then, you know, what does ultimately delivery on the recommendations look like? So I think there's a lot of opportunity to better define how these committees operate and leverage the time that residents are willing to give.
I think, I think on that, my impression was during the master plan, that, you know, we went through all the amenities of all the parks and what we could do, and pickleball, they all come up, pickleball. And it came up over and over, and disc golf, and it kind of came up as, hey, those are kind of inexpensive things that we don't need to wait till the grant is done, or we don't need to wait a year or two. And so I think the parks kind of picked that up as, here's something we can kind of focus on now, and Dave worked with them on, we'll come up with some designs, come up with some plans, where can it go, where would it fit? And kind of, kind of get ahead of that Parks Master Plan. And, and that's where I think it originated, and then it kind of continued. And I think they worked with Paul and Ian and said, hey, to help us design some, get some costing. And so I think it was, um, it was something that I think we could task them to do. And, um, and they did it, you know, they, they followed up and they looked at it. And I, I went to a couple of meetings and we talked about it. I think that was one of the Parks and Rec thoughts, was let's, let's work on these things that we can afford, maybe.
Yeah, and I think it comes back to, uh, council goals. And I think we've had, that just maybe my thought is, the last couple of times I've attended a couple of council goal, um, retreats, I, it's not what I thought would be a council goal retreat. And I thought when we're walking in, they were already done. That's my experience. I would like for the retreat to actually be, uh, you know, come with the ideas and actually hash them out. And that's what I think a retreat is, to, you know, talk about it and, and as a team, uh, come up with these goals. And maybe we will be more specific on these goals. And I will, like Counselor Holmes saying, the goal with the budget. I think that makes total sense, because you can't give them a goal, and if it's not going to come, because there's no money there. I think both committees would really appreciate that, say, hey, we have this, these goals, and this is the budget for these particular goals. I think that, I think that, that they would really appreciate more direction that way.
Right, and there, there has been some talk, because sometimes if the committees kind of are just free running, they can come with a lot of extra things for staff to do, and they're already stuck, not stuck, but they're already cast with a lot of things the council's already working on, the things that they already have to do with operations. So if there's extra on top of that, it can be hard to come back and like, hold on, unless that is tied into the specific things they're already working on, so.
Could you think of like, like five questions that you would think, and then we could each give you, you know, what do we think of each committee, kind of separately? And how, how should they be organized around who develops the agenda? You know, you got a liaison, you got a chair, you've got staff, and we got you and me. You know, who, who, who gets to develop an agenda for the parks? Because I, like with us, you guys develop an agenda on things you need and you send it. But if I or someone else has something they want to put on it, we can add it on there. So does the chair develop an agenda, but if staff wants to add to it or add something, they can add it? Or, or does the chair and the liaison, you know, does the chair present it to liaison and say, here's what I want to talk about? And liaison looks at it and says, okay, that's, that's not going to require a lot of staff time at this point. You know, you will get information and, and okay's the agenda? You know, how do we each see these going forward?
Right.
Bring all that information together. Maybe four of us say one thing and three say another, and you can kind of adjust them, and then we approve it.
Yeah, and I think it would be worthwhile to have like a work session and kind of go over this, uh, those things and to come up with some decisions. Today, I was just more wanting to get, at the thought of get those going, so you can start thinking about that as we bring it together, so we can come together with that. Just, um, another part with that is the staff involvement. As you mentioned, how involved are they? What? You know, are they the ones coming up with the agendas? Is this more of the staff coming to them to get extra help on things that are part of our goals? Or is this, are they really just those record-keeping people to help make sure that it stays within public records? And that they're running their own stuff? Like, the other part, um, we had talked about, I talked to some of you about was the liaison, you know, what part is the liaison from the council? And some committees I've seen where the liaison is actually on the committee or the chair of the committee, and then the rest of the committee is there to help them. So they're, you know, that sometimes helps make sure those meetings are happening and staying on target with what the council's wanting. But then the committee's there to help facilitate the rest of that. Doesn't be that has to be the way to go. I'm just, those are questions to think about. I, I'd be curious of what would be best for you guys. Once again, it's all to help council and the staff accomplish the goals, um, that, the vision and the goals that the council has. So, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I jump in here real quick?
Yeah.
So just to give a little bit of context first, and then I have a question for Counselor Jacobs as the liaison. But the, the committees have been a work in progress.
Right.
And, uh, Council President Gryson, when she was still here, um, did a lot of work to try to get the committees more organized. But I think it starts with, which has already been said here tonight, is that it starts with what the council goals are. But there's been a huge lack of an SOP for what, I mean, we should have standing SOPs for each one of these committees, how they function, maybe with a little bit of deviation. But it should really stem in what council goals are, I think, every year. And then that gives them the guidance, you know, with the liaison's assistance too. But, so I guess my next thought is, uh, question is to Counselor Jacobs, what do you see the problem? Do you see, is it the individuals? I mean, because you, to me, you cited like a performance issue, like they're just not doing anything. So is it, is it an issue of, do they not have enough guidance to do anything? Is it people being lazy? Do we need to, do we need to appoint new people? I mean, what is it, in your opinion, that, I know we don't want to get too far into this tonight, but, um.
These are all good questions to start asking.
Is the problem? I mean, I'm, I'm still not understanding what the real problem is.
I think it's a, it comes down to what is the objective trying to help council with? I don't, they accomplished the goal of getting the master plan put together. Then there were these two subsequent additional projects. Don't think there's a clear direction of what do we do now, what do we do next? And it's also coupled with the, well, what is the budget? And, but can we actually get moved forward? So I think with having some of those missing pieces creates a little frustration, a little stagnation, understandably.
And I think part of that also comes into what is their role in that? You know, once you have those priorities down to other Parks Master Plan, do they really need to be part of that next part? Or is that a council decision?
Right.
Start putting those two, is it really their role?
We really need to start with what staff's role is for each of these committees, what the liaison's role is for each of these committees. It needs to be on paper, and everybody needs to understand it. I mean, there even needs to be an orientation when we appoint new members, because that, yeah, that hasn't, that hasn't been. I mean, everybody needs to play in the same sandbox here. If nobody knows what the rules of the sandbox are, then it's going to be really disjointed.
Right, and they do have the bylaws that describe those to some extent, but there's enough vagueness and lack of direction on top of that, that it's, it's almost like people can punt off who's responsible, um, who, who's really needs to drive this, who needs to make that decision? Who's, you know, does these things, it's kind of, I, I agree, it just needs to be more specific, probably from what I've experienced thus far.
Counselor Holmes needs to bounce, so what, do you have final comments?
Yeah, no, I just, uh, thank you for bringing this up, uh, city manager Burgener. I think it's a really important topic, and I think, uh, there's good opportunity to increase the utility of these committees. So I have to go, I have to pick up my son. I'm solo parenting while my husband is hunting this week, so apologies. Thank you, everyone. Have a good week.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I think it'd be good to do some type of work session, and just start with those roles, kind of look through these bylaws, see if we need to, what we need to adjust, and probably get feedback from the committees as well, the frustrations they've had. I've, I've talked to some, I've talked to the staff, but even maybe talking to them at their next meeting as a whole, just asking them the same questions could be beneficial, where they're like, well, they're feeling the same thing, like, we don't have direction. We don't know, we're just kind of meeting to meet, which is never ideal.
If you can remember any of this that we've given you tonight, or through listening to it later, and can keep some notes and bring it to it. Because one, Because one, two is, um, yeah, I mean, one, one thought I had was they should not pass staff with jobs. It's the council. Like if they wanted something done, basically it goes kind of through liaison or through us. And then we say, yeah, that's going to take so many hours and so much work. And then we can say yes or no. But, um, to me, the ta, the staff is there to keep notes and to send out the meeting and the post, uh, public meeting stuff. And then if, if it is going to take more time or money, that kind of comes more on council.
Awesome. Oh, great, great feedback. I appreciate it. That's very helpful. And that's all I have for updates today.
Great. Appreciate it. Uh, Chief Llewellyn?
Yes, yes, sir. So, everybody, good afternoon. Just a couple of things for Police Department, community rally events. Um, on the 27th of, uh, September, we did a interstate, uh, Lions Patrol out there. We're rated WSP, Washington Patrol Trooper who lost life in line of duty, um, earlier this year. So we did that. Couple officers came out, did patrols and stuff. So it was really good to be able to participate with that. Uh, this past Wednesday, Portland Police Bureau, I think we're building a pretty good relationship there, but really, our department's really trying to build our brand, um, out there. And, uh, we went to train with them before back in, um, August. They donate some, um, free, uh, crowd control measure gear, protective equipment for us. Completely free besides the gas mileage, take our R350 up there. Maybe somewhat expensive, but, so when got a chance to do that, um, this upcoming Friday, uh, we'll be doing a seven mile war showdown in St. Helens. So we'll go up there with them to go see that now with booths and, uh, you know, high school, um, fighting against each other. CBA, won't go into details here too much, but we had a, um, meeting last Monday and also have one coming up this upcoming Wednesday. It's going somewhat good so far. Seeing on for, uh, we had a officer who was part of FTO process. Uh, I rode with him personally for, for weeks, absolutely a great human being. Just at this time, he wasn't ready for position police officer, make a really tough decision. However, he has transitioned to our code enforcement, uh, which is part-time. So he's still with the city. He's still an employee. He still works Police Department, just in another capacity. I could tell you working for almost two years now, code enforcement and the complaints we get are numerous. And, uh, you know, it's good to have a person who's got his head on his shoulders, be able to take care of that. So really happy to have him there, really take the reins. And, uh, they also help some of our officers who are full-time officers be able to go ahead and throw other things that happen within the city. Try to deal with that. We certainly, we have seven people in Police Department right now, including myself, just try to help by recruiting. We develop a training committee that meets once a month. We do it for a couple of months now. Uh, one of our officers had a great idea to try to restart the Reserve Academy Program, going to shoot for 2026, try to make that a reality. And Reserve Academy Program, they don't get paid as officers, but it gives you a good pool of officers, or from the possibly come from full-time. There has been people that have reached out to me, interested in that, contacted here in the community. So, uh, besides that, that's really all I have right now. Depending on any questions, I'll be happy to entertain.
I just want to speak to the code enforcement one real quick. Chief Llew, Llew, I'm going to say your name wrong every time.
It's, it's like the virus and I don't like the name.
Yeah, Llewellyn, um, he, he actually came up with that proposal. I had worked in Stanfield with a code enforcement officer and it was actually a really good opportunity. But as he's taking care of his staff and really trying to build that culture, he, as he had mentioned, that, that good person, good staff member. The, the patrolling wasn't maybe their strong point, but record keeping and the other things were. So we proposed, yes, it does use one of his FTE, um, and it's only a part-time position at this time, but there is opportunity to grow with that as well. So it was the really, the question for that was if we're going to transition this and make that position, is there the positive benefit for the, um, community as well as for the patrol? And, and both those questions are absolutely yes, there's a lot that can happen and that position can grow, um, in many other, in other areas as well. So I'm excited for that and it was a great way to really extend that to keep a, a positive trajectory for some outreach for an employee and not just discarding that, but to look at their strengths and, and make a position around them. That, like I said, is very beneficial for everybody as well. So that was a really good proposal and wanted to recognize you for that.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So as far as I know, we're still a complaint-driven code model, right?
Really speaking, so I could talk to that, sir. So I'm not too sure how it was beforehand, but I knew there was a part-time code enforcement officer. I think she worked seasonally, I believe so. Um, and my goal with this position is instead of being so much reactive, it's going to be proactive in a 20-hour work period. So besides dealing with the codes, complaints that we do have and following through, a lot of times it's, we like to go through education. A lot of people don't know about your grant's supposed to be 10 inches or less and things like that. To try to really go through that, but also be real proactive so it doesn't come to an issue. Because most of the time, what I've noticed here, it's something that's been going on or a neighbor or somebody just has enough of it and they contact us for law enforcement. And it's, it's important for us to obviously, but our staffing, criminal investigations and child abuse, all that stuff, she's going to take priority enough that.
Right. And I think maybe some of the concern you have if you become the hall monitor of code enforcement, it kind of causes a lot of bad PR too. And so having a mix of that, um, client base, but taking more proactive on the really serious issues, I think coming with that, um, fine line is, is helpful, uh, for sure. And as opposed to being just strictly like super proactive and calling people out for everything. Um, I, I've experienced both under there. So there is, um, we'll, we'll work together and make sure it's, but from what I've heard from staff, there's quite a backlog of stuff already. So I don't know how long it will be till you get to the proactive side anyways.
I'd like to think too, maybe on the proactive side, it's like more like you said, education.
Right.
Work with the commu, you know, community and citizens first.
That's what we try to do on a lot of situations. So, and this officer, I could tell you, he has that personality. So sometimes you do have to go the extra route, but-
Just to clarify, that be, is that patrolling violations to, it just?
Yes.
Okay.
Be also looking to see certain things. And a lot of times like, hey, a lot of people don't know. I mean, most people don't go on Google or downtime at night and say, look at the municipal code and see, or roosters or something like that we can take care of too.
Thank you for clarifying.
And, and just the backlog they have, talking to Public Works, and this is the same thing in my last, in Stanfield, they see a lot of stuff that just goes unreported because they have like their street super that's out there all the time. They see it all the time and it's like, well, I'm not going to report anything because nothing can happen at this time. There's too much other things to do. So, um, yeah, I think it'll be a while till we really see, they, they're working on that program to really develop that, but we'll, we'll get more as that develops, just really see where it takes off and work with. Um, obviously if you hear things and we need to adjust that, it'd be good to, to make sure that we're staying proactive, helping the community, but not being such a, on the other side as well, you know, happy in that, happy in that, happy middle there.
Great. Appreciate it. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Council Jacob?
Run with Neil on Saturday. You haven't registered, you should register. Y'all of you there.
Sign up.
Thank you.
I'm signed up and I got my husband to sign up.
Thank you. Nice weather. Thank you. Uh, Council of Friends?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Santiago?
I was just mentioning the Run With Neil. Um, also, uh, thank you for, for recognizing Indigenous Day, October 14th. Mayor and I are going to be at LOC Conference next week. Looking forward to that. The, the, oh, you're going to mention the dinner. What else? I think that's about it. And the, and then, uh, you already, you already mentioned it, the 10th, the EDC moved to the 10th from the 7th.
Thank you. Council, Council President Miller?
Um, I don't really have anything, just, I think enough has been said about, uh, the Police Department. Seems to get the most accolades lately, but, um, I do want to say that it is, uh, nice to see that we don't lose our investment because the conversation that we've had extensively is about how much money we lose on the investment of losing somebody that goes through academy, the field training, uniforms and equipment. So any of that that we can sell, which too is, I mean, I know there's not always going to be that opportunity. And I'm, uh, I want to say that I'm really happy to see that, um, demonstration that our decisions can be made. Um, because we've had this conversation before where we really want quality, uh, quantity. I think the quality aspect is where we've gotten ourselves perhaps in trouble in the past. So hopefully we're getting out of that and we, um, make the hard decisions where hard decisions need to be made.
Thank you. Like Council Santiago said, next week, October 17, 18 and 19, the League of Oregon City Conference and Ben, uh, City Manager and I and Council Santiago will be over there. So hopefully we'll bring back some really good stuff. The City County Dinner is set for October 22nd. At this time, we only have 11 people signed up. Tomorrow was the deadline for head count. So, um, do you guys have a number? If we can't get that extended a few days and is there a number that if I only have under 20 people, we cancel it? Is there something there? Normally there's 27 to 30 people at a dinner. Is there a number where we just say, we'll wait and do it next time?
Is there a standard there that the other cities have used or?
I've only been to a few of them and they're always in that 25 to 30, but, um, 11 probably, and six of them are from SCAPUs. Wouldn't probably, seven now, 12 of us, seven of us, it wasn't, it wouldn't really be worth having it.
People are busy. Everyone gets busy and sometimes emails you, just look at it and just, I'll get back to, you know, uh, get back to it. But I don't mind making some calls just to add that personal, hey, invite over. If we can extend the deadline, that would be great.
We'd ask for maybe a day or so. Port of Columbia County just added four. So it should be good. I mean, I, we'll give it a day or so and if we, we should be able to get at least 20, they're going to have four. He was going to email everybody tomorrow. So hopefully people get it out tomorrow. You could definitely, Susan can get you the information. You could blast it out with, you know, only two certain people.
It's only to the city.
Can you explain, can you explain what the city?
The City County Dinner, mainly city elected officials and staff of the, all the cities in our county, uh, fire, police, PUDs. We get together once a quarter in a different city to go over the hot topic. We have Patty Mulville from the League of Oregon Cities coming and talking about legislation updates. And that was my next question. She'd like to know kind of what do we want to hear? Uh, legislation updates that could be going through? What was the other thing?
Case law.
Case law, there's some case law things. Give her about half hour to kind of speak on anything. She's a great speaker. So those are probably the two things. Any case law that she thinks is pertinent to small communities like ours, counties? We told her she can go as long as she wants because she's usually pretty engaging and keeps you going. Um, but then each city gives a little update from each city, a few minutes from each city or com, uh, group and then at why we're eating dinner. So, um, that usually takes up to two hours pretty easily.
Have we heard from Rainier County and St. Helens?
We got one from Rainier. I emailed, I emailed St. Helens, I emailed Burnonia, Columbia County. So I should get some.
I talked to Jerry quite a bit. I'll poke him tonight.
We have one of their counselors.
Um, also Mayor Shoal, I can reach out to him too.
I just seen him earlier.
Definitely the commissioners too.
Got the mayor of class, can I? Yeah, nobody from there.
You got anything from the county commissioners?
That's all that's responded.
Okay.
We'll work on that. We did last week have the John Gumm Civic Center grand opening. Columbia County, you know, bought the building, the old John Gumm Building, and it will be headquarters for their, um, county commissioners. CET will be renting part of it. There'll be a huge, um, Columbia County Historical Museum. I really recommend you guys all get out. It's an old school, looks a lot like our mid-school, a little bit smaller, and they renovated it and made it really nice.